Hi, everyone. Welcome back to the Legal Blend Podcast. My name is K for Garcia from Garcia Law, and I'm very, very excited today to introduce our special guest. But before we get there, as you all know, we highlight a local coffee shop. So today, we're actually in Jersey City, New Jersey, and we are highlighting Beachwood Cafe. The councilman, Mr. Yusuf Saleh, and I had a bit of coffee from Beachwood Cafe. Let me tell you, number one, it's literally across the street from City Hall in Jersey City. Two, the ambiance in the cafe is amazing, but most importantly, the coffee. What would you say?
It's really good.
There we go.
Strong.
Strong, strong. And without further ado, like I said before, it's a pleasure to have Councilman Yusuf J. Saleh from Ward D in Jersey City. Yusuf is a dear friend of mine, colleague. Yusuf is a local Jersey City kid. He grew up here, graduated from McNair High School. I got to know Yusuf at Rutgers Law, and he also attended Rutgers New Brunswick, correct?
Yes.
And now, after much hard work, Yusuf is now Councilman for Ward D, which is...
The Heights and downtown area.
Perfect, perfect. A lot of people, when they say Jersey City, New Jersey, some immediately think of you. And why do you think that is?
I'm a loyal son of Jersey City. I was born and raised here. And yeah, this is the only home I've ever known.
And Yusuf is very humble, right? Because Yusuf comes from a line of service. And I say that because when I look at your resume, your biography, you've been in service through high school, through college. I've seen it firsthand at Rutgers Law School. So tell me a little bit about that, that history of service. When did it start?
I'd say it started at the Beachwood, if you will. It's interesting that you highlighted this coffee shop because, you know, I was interested in politics after 9/11 because I saw a lot of disparaging images and stereotypes about Muslim Americans. So in my head, I'm like, you know, this doesn't square up with who I am, the demonization of Muslim Americans. And I promised myself that I would go into this arena, you know, and show that Muslims can be and are, you know, part of the integral fabric of America. And then I could be just like Captain America or Superman or, you know, any of those superheroes. So that's what motivated me to go into politics, to represent not just the Muslim community, but my entire community. And, you know, when I was 17 years old, I actually emailed Mayor Fuller, Pharoah Yusuf, MSN or whatever, Hotmail.com, because I was watching Yu-Gi-Oh! at the time. And, you know, it's a silly email. Email was just coming into fruition at that time, but...
Dial-up, right?
Yeah, we were dialing up. It was slow.
For all those who don't know dial-up, look it up, look it up.
So I emailed the... He was a first-year councilman. He just got elected.
Okay.
And I was on the citywide student council, and I emailed him saying I was interested in going to politics. Lo and behold, Councilman Fuller emailed me back and said he wanted to have a meeting, you know, to discuss how I could get involved at the Beachwood right next to City Hall. So it was pretty incredible that this coffee was where my origin story sort of began. And I would go on to become president at McNair Academic, president at Rutgers New Brunswick, president at Rutgers Law School, commencement speaker. And, you know, I make it sound easy, but it was, it is, has been a grueling journey. But baby, we're not done yet, so...
So, true story, Beachwood Cafe, that's where... Wow. And by the way, I did not know all of this, so this is...
This is all fresh.
Yeah, this is all coincidence.
Just like the coffee.
Wow, full circle.
They should sponsor.
Full circle, full circle. Okay, okay. And then, so at Rutgers Law, I would see you, right? You were a year younger than me, right? When I was a 2L, you were a 1L and so on. I saw a federal tax clinic. Wow. Boring or...?
It is a specific kind of boring, but for gluttons for punishment, it is actually the most interesting subject. So if you're willing to peruse through thousands of pages of the tax code, you know, and all of their publications and everything that, you know, branches off from not just the actual code itself, but the case law, the publications, all of that, you will find out that politics and the tax code are intertwined with one another.
God bless your heart, because I would not be able to do that. But for D Councilman, what area of Jersey City is that?
That is the Heights and also now part of downtown. So my borders have expanded as of the 2020 census.
And that's where you grew up?
I grew up in the Heights, yes.
Wow.
Now, it's a special thing to basically go and be born in an area and be able to one day represent that area, you know? And I stepped in during the pandemic when my community needed me the most. And, you know, it's been truly an honor to serve my community. Really, you know, for the good and the bad, the ups and the downs, like, it's been an absolute honor.
I saw it firsthand at Rutgers Law, right? You were in the student government, student body representation, and you were dedicated, and I see that personally. On social media, you post at 9:00 PM, 10:00 PM, and it's, you don't see that much from councilmen and taking the time. So definitely, it's an honor to have you here today. I really appreciate it. I know you're busy, right? So let's get to the nitty-gritty a little bit, right? So the reason, one of the reasons I wanted to have you in the episode today is I read something, and if I could read it to you, it's from Everything Jersey City. I think I did an interview with them. And it says, "I want affordable housing, not just in the Heights, but everywhere across Jersey City. I want to make sure our growth as a city and in the Heights is responsible, eco-friendly, and family-friendly. That the Heights always remains a place where you can lay roots here, whether you're an immigrant, whether you're coming from New York or another part of Jersey City." So tell me about that, affordable housing. How important is that to you?
Affordable housing is an existential crisis that we have, not just in Jersey City, but across the country. You see rents have skyrocketed. The American dream seems to be slipping farther and farther away from the millennial and Gen Z generation. And when it comes to being able to be financially stable and being able to have more kids and set roots, the only way to properly do that is through affordable housing. And having policymakers and government officials recognize that the only way for people to have that social mobility, to break generational curses or generational trauma or generational poverty, is to have that bedrock foundation of affordable housing. Because if you don't have it, then you just get into a cycle of unaffordability. You get into a cycle of poverty, and it has downstream effects on everything, right?
100%.
It costs more to incarcerate someone than to educate them. It costs about $55,000, $60,000 a year in the state of New Jersey, and it costs about $25,000, $30,000 if you were going to educate that child. So you ask me what's more economically efficient, to educate or incarcerate? And then, if you want that family to have that stability, you need to have a stable home. So unaffordable housing is a real problem.
100%, because, you know, we do a lot of real estate, and a lot of the realtors you work with, I see the listings in Jersey City. I see these beautiful condos, these brownstones. They're beautiful, right? The downtown life here is always buzzing, right? Great restaurants, great nightlife. But then you bring up an important point. Just like you growing up, families need affordable housing. Families need a place to live and lay their roots, right? What would you say, have you taken any steps as far as in your position to delve into affordable housing or make it more accessible?
So we have a golden doors program in Jersey City, so they provide down payment assistance. And essentially, it used to be $20,000 only. Now it's about, I think, $120,000, $150,000. But obviously, it's very income restricted, so you have to meet like a special criteria. And not everyone can qualify for that. When it comes to, let's say, keeping people in their homes, we've passed right-to-council legislation, which affords people the opportunity to have an attorney represent them. And that has actually been shown in other municipalities to lower the eviction rate just by virtue of them having a lawyer to represent them in court. So in addition, I think that the Inclusionary Zoning Law we passed, essentially, this law says that certain areas of Jersey City have to have either 10% or 15% affordable. In downtown, in the downtown area, it's 15%. And in the other regions in Jersey City, it would be 10%. And this is just the bare minimum.
Right.
In addition, when you speak to developers about projects, like you, we as a council can insist like, hey, like, you guys need to have union labor, right? When you're doing this project, we insist that you have affordable housing. So the Inclusionary Zoning Law that we passed is part of that. But, you know, we have tried to essentially incentivize the creation of more affordable units throughout Jersey City. It's nowhere where it needs to be, and I'm just going to be honest about that.
Right.
Like, we have a housing crisis in America. We're so many units behind. We need to build millions of homes to even keep pace with the growth of our country, right? Like, everyone's sitting on their home like, oh, I got this $2 million, $1 million house. And like, you've got like a few kids in your family, and like, where are they going to live? How are they going to start their family? So we need to start thinking as a country, like, what are we going to do? How are we going to build more housing? Increase the supply to reduce the cost.
Taking that into account, if we take the flip side, and I say to you, let's just say, playing devil's advocate, we have developers injecting money into the community, right? New condos, beautiful amenities, all that. And that would essentially bring other businesses to the city, right? What would you say to that when developers say, well, if I'm putting money into it and it's going for higher market value and those families who are growing and laying roots here can't afford that? What's the pro and con? How do you see that?
What's the pro and con between...?
Between developers coming and investing money, and let's say a condo is going for $600,000, but some local people in Jersey City can't afford that, but maybe New Yorkers can, right? So you have that influx of money, that injection of money into the economy, but at the same time, what you were advocating for, local Jersey City families might not have access to that.
Having developers come into an area that is in need of investment is a good thing. However, you cannot, you know, downplay the impact of gentrification. You need to be able to thread a delicate needle where you have investment in an area, but you're also taking steps to essentially have those families that have paid taxes into the community, that sent their kids to the schools in the community, to have those people reap the benefits of that growth and of that advancement and of that investment.
Right. And that brings to mind something that I read in your resume, right? Does the End Hedge Fund Control of the American Homes Act ring a bell?
Absolutely. The, that is legislation that's currently being reviewed in the House of Representatives in Congress. And the End Hedge Fund Control Act essentially would say that for one-to-four-family homes, it would ban hedge funds, private equity, institutional investors, and REITs from owning those one-to-four-family homes. For a long time, you know, they were not in this space. And now that they have occupied this space, they're essentially buying up one-to-four-family homes and making a permanent renter slash indentured servant class in America. And that's not what we want. This is, the American dream is slipping away, and we need to course correct, right? Capitalism is great, and we need to make sure that we have the guardrails in place to allow everyone to take part and to be able to own a piece of the American pie.
And you say guardrails, it's an interesting analogy or, you know, similarly, right, a metaphor. Guardrails, who sets up those guardrails? Whose responsibility is that?
It's, it should be the government that comes in and puts those guardrails in place. Like, capitalism is great, but if it's unfettered or if, worse, if the government is being co-opted by the very agents they're supposed to regulate, then that is not appropriate. You need to make sure that the government is working for the people, that their tax dollars are being reinvested back in their communities and that they are able to reap the benefit of the money that's coming out of their paychecks.
100%. I can agree with that. I mean, that's why we pay taxes.
Absolutely. Like, you see a 30-year paycheck goes out the door. Then you go to the store, you pay a sales tax. You sell something, you buy something, you die. Like, anytime you're interacting with the economy, you are paying some sort of a tax. And it's like, where is it going? And how can we make it the most economically efficient with the greatest return for our residents?
I see where the federal tax clinic came in.
Exactly. That's, that, it's so critical for us to understand that and to know that every time we raise taxes, like, you know, how we're doing it, why we're doing it, and why it's appropriate or not appropriate.
Yeah. Another hot topic I get asked about all the time in major cities or major communities where the rent is high, there's a craving for housing, Airbnb in Jersey City. What's your take on that? Pro Airbnb, not so much?
I think Airbnb decimated communities. Airbnb is a great gig economy, like, gig economy application in theory. However, in its application in the community, it incentivizes a large turnover of people that are not really deeply rooted or invested in the community. For certain vacation areas, Airbnb is okay.
For example, Orlando, Florida?
If there, if there is a, you know, I've never been, but hopefully...
I gotta take you.
Hopefully, I get to go. I don't take many vacations. But if I was to take a vacation, I would probably go to, you know, Orlando.
Disney World, I'll take you to Disney.
But I signed up for Disney Plus, so if I get hit by a bus, I'm done.
That's another discussion.
There's a mandatory arbitration clause evidently if you do a free trial of Disney Plus, so...
And the terms and conditions and all that, you gotta read it carefully.
I took one for my whole family, the team. I took one for the team, I swear. I'm the Disney Plus guy. Back to the Airbnb, though.
Yeah.
So the Airbnb is great for those touristy communities, for the economies that are like that. However, when you're talking about like, you know, neighborhoods, just average neighborhoods in America, I think that it really doesn't incentivize like families, and it takes up the space that a family would generally take up.
Definitely.
I'll tell you some of my incidents that I've had, like from Airbnbs in the Heights, like drug deals, like people pay, getting stabbed at these houses. Like, so it's, you know, this is something I dealt with early on. And like, I would call the landlord, I'd say, listen, like, XYZ is happening at your Airbnb, drug deals, stabbings, music, crazy Project X-type parties. And, you know, you need to either rent it out to a family or sell it. Like, this is not sustainable, and it's wrong for the community. We don't, we can't have this happening. So also, we get a hotel tax. So if people stay at the hotels, it actually comes back to the city. So there are a lot of considerations to take place. I think the most important one is the fabric of the community. And I think Airbnb doesn't help that.
Yeah, because there's a lot of transient people, right? People here for a few nights. Like you said, they're not rooted in the community. They're not your families usually, right?
Yeah.
Let's take a tour into your perspective of Jersey City. First thing that comes to mind, first three things that come to mind, top three restaurants you would recommend Jersey City to eat? I know it's hard because there's a lot of good stuff here.
Dude, that's like asking which child is your favorite child. I don't know, you know, you can't really say, oh my God, that's a tough one.
Top three.
Top three? Dude, I can't say top three.
Okay, three that come to mind.
All right, yeah. I'll do three restaurants.
That'll find Yusuf usually in because he loves the food.
Well, there's a, there's a few. I eat everywhere. I'm a big guy, as you may know, may or may not know. You can't tell through the camera, but...
We're the same height, by the way.
When we're sitting down. Let's see, three that come to mind? Are we talking breakfast food, dinner, like what we... Damn, you can't do that, man. Look at this, this is, these are hard-boiled questions.
Okay, okay. So one for breakfast, one for lunch, one for dinner.
Okay.
Let's help you out there.
Okay, so Wonder Bagels, great for breakfast.
Okay.
Tommy's, also in the Heights, great for breakfast. What else? The Griot, great for breakfast. That's in the Heights. I would say lunch, you're looking at the Franklin. You're looking at Central Avenue Bistro. And what else is a good lunch spot? You could also go to either Pizza Masters or Gino's.
I gotta check these out, never been to any of these.
Okay. Dinner, you're looking at either Corto. I know The Roxy just opened up, also owned by, you know, Corto owners. What else? There's a restaurant, The Hutton, really good.
That sounds interesting.
You gotta loosen up the top button when you go to The Hutton.
Where's that?
That's in the Heights.
In the Heights.
I'm standing for only Ward D food.
Yeah, because I heard a little bit biased here, but okay. But Hutton, what type of food is it?
It is like American with like a twist.
Okay.
There's like this chicken sandwich that's got like an Indian-like thing to it.
Gotcha. Okay. Is it Indian fusion type of thing?
Yeah, yeah. There's a bunch of stuff on there. It's not just Indian fusion, but they got, they got some creative flavors going on. What else do I like?
Yeah, I think you named like three, three and three.
Oh, best lobster roll is Angry Archie's. Better than anywhere, get the Angry Lobster Roll. That's if you're looking for like a snack or something or like a really good lobster roll.
I gotta watch this back later so I can hit up all these spots.
Absolutely.
Now, I think...
Coffee also, God, you got me started.
Yeah, he's on a roll.
So Mod Cup, very good. They're the only coffee spot that I know that actually, when they put the flavoring in, they put it in like this mixer, you know, the thing that you have in the bar.
Like a diffuser thing, yeah?
They, they put it in the shaker, you know?
Okay.
What's the thing that the bartender uses, like?
The shaker?
Yeah, the shaker. They put it in the shaker, and they mix everything, and it's just like chef's kiss.
I gotta try that. Mod Cup?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Now, you as a councilman, you as a person, I think they're intertwined, right? But a lot of people are attracted to your story because, like you said, you're a Jersey City kid, right? With a history of service. What would you tell, you know, those five-year-olds, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, eight-year-olds who are saying, I'm from Jersey City. I grew up here, my parents are from here? What is it that they should strive for if they were to follow in your steps?
I think that they should strive to improve upon, you know, the work that has been done. There's not a lack of problems in this world. And, you know, every day seems to have more and more problems. And we are counting on them to step up to the plate. I think some of the fatal flaw of our political system is that we do not give the torch willingly to the next generation, that we aren't training the next generation of leaders. I would say to the next generation or any generation or anyone looking to get into this, like, be persistent, be professional, always be nice to people, be good to people, even the people that aren't necessarily nice to you because it's a testament to your character and your, the fabric of your DNA, how good you are to folks. And that is the way to enter this arena, is to do it with love, to do it with a passion and like a painter who's never quite satisfied, just continue to add to the brushstrokes of the history past.
Right.
And I think we need to build the leaders for tomorrow. And that's been the problem. And it's not that we're always going to agree with the next generation when they come in, but we need to give them the tools to be capable to take over, right? We need them the tools to be able to have their moral compass point true north, to be able to make the hard decisions that need to be made, to preserve the communities that we come from and to basically preserve our legacies, like honoring our history while also paving the future for the next people coming up. We're only here on this earth for a short time.
Short time.
So we owe it to them to not be gatekeepers, to send the elevator back down to the next generation.
Okay.
I'm an open book. You could intern from my office, like, so...
There you have it. Send in those resumes. I'll take a look at them and forward them to him.
Yeah, it's a leadership crisis. Like, there's not a lot of people that want to enter this field because it is very dog-eat-dog. It's a blood sport, and it doesn't have to be that way. It doesn't have to be so cutthroat. But we need to make sure that they are resilient and they're leaders and they're able to, you know, be strong but kind.
Strong but kind. And let me ask you something. If I were to go down Ward D, right, those streets in the Heights, and ask people, use one word to describe your councilman, what do you think they would say?
You're gonna get a lot. You're gonna get a lot of varied responses and...
Let's say the most common one, you think?
I think that they will say he's tireless.
Oh, okay. I mean, from your posts on social media, I think that that could be corroborated.
Yeah, I think different versions of me exist in people's heads. And I've come to realize that as like a public figure, that you can't control exactly how people perceive you. And there's sometimes people come up to me, they're like, oh, remember so-and-so like event, and that's how I met you the first time. And, you know, I may recall it, may not. I, I think that the word they would use is tireless and I don't take vacations. This is my only job. And I left my corporate job to do this, to give the people of Jersey City the committed leadership that they needed during the pandemic. And I don't regret it one bit. I love every second of it.
Nice, okay. Now, what would be your greatest achievement so far as a councilman?
There's so many. I can't boil it down to like one.
Okay.
If you're talking about legislation, like we have pay transparency, which we did here in Jersey City, which means like job postings have to have the pay scale and benefits on there. The right-to-council legislation. If you're talking about projects, like, all of the parks in my area are having work done on them, whether it was Mosquito Park or if it's Riverview Park. We finished that park during the pandemic. And then we added a turf field. We redid Central Avenue.
What's closest to your heart?
That's honestly, we literally transformed the Heights.
You did, by the way. That is very true.
Yeah, like, there's not a single area that is not going to be touched by the time I'm done, like...
That's your legacy.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're putting this on rocket fuel. We're gonna go to the moon. Like, that's what I intend to do. Like, the next, hopefully, next term. I do intend on getting re-elected, by the way. So the next term, we'll finish the parks, like the playgrounds. We'll put some shade on the playgrounds for the kids, put water fill stations around to encourage sustainability. You know, I've been discussing legislation for the plastic refund deposit. So like, you know, when you have a water bottle, you give like five cents, 10 cents, whatever. I didn't know there's a garbage lobby, but there's a garbage lobby in Jersey, in New Jersey that is opposed to having the plastic deposit refund.
Okay.
So I'm working on that. That's going to be a little heavier of a lift.
You've been very busy.
Absolutely. We're working on it, but they don't want the plastic to be diverted from the garbage stream because they make money off of the tonnage.
Gotcha.
Like, we live on a very ghetto earth, I swear to God. That's why aliens have not visited us That's why aliens have not visited us because it's really ghetto here on planet Earth. We're like fighting each other, we, we have a garbage lobby, like there's, there's a lot of stuff happening.
Walking down the street, ask a few people, what's the number one question you want me to ask? Councilman salad? And I think the number one question I got was, there's rumors of a run for mayor. Is that in the, in the stars or no?
It might be in the stars, but not right now.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Definitely, I compare it to like Avatar, the, the show.
Yes, yes.
So like I've learned to like water bend, I've learned.
Oh, not the blue, not Avatar.
No, not that, not that Avatar.
So Avatar, Airbend.
Although I do sometimes feel like the Navi in Jersey City, like because I'm born and raised here, there's very few of us left. Like you learn to earth bend, water bend, air bend and fire bend. I haven't learned to bend all four elements yet, but I'm going to. And once I do, you know, we'll, we'll get to run for mayor.
Okay, so it's, it's in the future maybe?
Absolutely, sometime in the future.
Gotcha.
Don't know when, don't know how, but I'll leave that up to the big man upstairs.
And then my last question for you, what's, what's a quote you live by?
There's a few. It's something that Mayor Philip told me when I met with him when I was a kid.
At Beechwood?
Yeah, he said, be kind to everybody. So you never know who that person is, what burden they're bearing or cross they're carrying, like be kind to everybody and meet them, you know, where they're at. And that's something that I've carried with me. And, you know, also this too shall pass. That's something that I think about because when you're going through a lot of the trials and tribulations, I try, I try my best to live, live to those ideals. I can't say that, you know, I haven't had my share of fights or my share of arguments with folks, but I stand on principle and I will defend my community. I'll defend the Jersey City community and I will defend myself if I have to. I take Taekwondo, so I believe in self-defense, I'm a red belt, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
Did not know, you're red belt?
Yeah.
Okay, I have one more question. Give me two other things your constituents might not know about you.
I love movies, I'm a big advocate for movies. So if there's ever opportunity for a production to come to the Ward D area, I've always been like, let's go, let's do it, let's, let's do it live, like.
Wow, if Colonel Reeves is watching this, John Wick five, Ward D would be great.
Absolutely, they just had the Mark Wahlberg Halle Berry movie, The Union. So when he's rolling down the hill, when Mark Wahlberg is rolling down the hill, that's actually mosquito park in the Heights.
Okay.
I did get to meet him too, he's a very nice guy.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, he's, he's super nice, so.
And one more thing they don't know about you?
I mean, they should, they should know that I live and breathe this stuff. Like this is my passion to serve the community and I think of myself as a waiter, you know? Like to serve the people, like, hey, you want to speed hump with that? Hey, you want me to repave your road? Like I think people sometimes get confused like what a council person does. It's to write laws, legislation and to basically vie for funding so that we can bring it back to the community. You know, I try and bring home the hummus every day, so.
That's a good one, try to bring home the hummus every day. I think it's the perfect way to wrap up. Councilman, it's been a pleasure. I know we've been trying to make this happen.
The pleasure's all mine.
No, I mean, this guy is very busy. I can attest, I saw it firsthand in law school, the way he serves, very few people serve in the way that you do it. It's been a pleasure to have you, you're the first politician on this podcast, so.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's a first for us. So I want to make sure that the first politician I brought in had a good, you know, threshold. And I think we accomplished it. Everyone, thank you for watching. Please let me know about those resumes for the internship.
Absolutely.
I think he would be a great boss. But thank you very much, everybody, for tuning in and.
I'm a great mentor, I'd like to think of myself as like Obi-Wan Kenobi.
Gotcha, perfect, thank you for having us, thank you for coming, I mean.
Absolutely, pleasure's all mine, thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, appreciate it.